Okay, we'll call the Tremont Pining Board Meeting of Tuesday, April ninth to order at 6:30 PM. Roll call. We have Lawson Woolson, Rhett Witham, Beth Gott, Ben Harper, myself, Mark Good, Deputy Code Enforcement Officer Katie Higgins, applicants and members of the public. Adjustment, adoption of the agenda. Derek, I understand you're in a hurry to get to a baseball game, no?
Already had a couple wins, my son hit a double. I missed the end of the game, but...
Did they win?
I'm not sure what happened.
Okay, okay. I didn't know whether we wanted to move lot before the subdivision, but I guess we don't need to do that then. I was gonna try to rush him out of there. Okay, minutes, March 26, 2024. The only question during the public hearing there, under climate defrocked representative, limiting the size of the rays rather than the flow of the electronics?
Think that should be electronic?
Electrons? I think I'd strike that whole sentence.
Okay.
Do we really need it? I'm asking.
I don't think so.
No.
What do you think, Lawson?
I think that you recommended focusing on limiting the size of the rays rather than the flow of electrons. Is... Summarized it. That seems fine, leave it in. If you want to strike it, that's okay too.
I'll take a motion. Whoever wants to make a motion, one way or the other.
I make a motion, we strike that portion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and second is to strike that sentence from the minutes. Any discussion? I don't think it's a big deal one way or another. Hearing nothing. All in favor? Opposed? Four, one, Lawson. Opposed, okay. So those who have been amended, Katie, of course. Okay.
Well, on ten, they've...
Oh, did you see something else?
Yeah, they... Mr. They could... She could put an R in Mr. Harper. A second R.
Didn't even notice that.
Mr. Harper, huh? I didn't catch that, yes. So we need that too.
How do you mean that?
Make a motion, they'd be approved as amended.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the Pining Board minutes of March 26th as amended. All in favor? I don't know how that actually works, Lawson, but okay. Okay, it's 6:33. I'll call the public hearing on Captain's Tales takeout to order. And please, if you're gonna speak, state your name. Anybody wanna go? Oh, let's be quick. Mr. Plegy, you're standing. I assume that you're gonna say something.
Thank you, I'd like to. I didn't know if the board was gonna entertain discussion from the applicant first, but I'd be happy to talk. My name is Daniel Plegy. I've been here and you guys are probably sick of seeing me, and I apologize for that. I represent Kathy Grant and Richard Wolfe, who are butters to the proposed site. On April 2nd, I submitted to the town by email and placed in UPS overnight a 14-page memorandum with site plan review ordinance references and land use ordinance references addressing what I believe are deficiencies in this application. At 6:25 PM tonight, I learned from Ms. Higgins that the UPS package did not get delivered, and I understand that board members don't have my submission, either from the email version or the original UPS delivery, and I apologize for that. I am happy, I have a copy with me, and I'm happy to go upstairs and photocopy it for you and distribute it tonight, or I'll be happy to read it to you because the record references are important. And again, I apologize for the inconvenience, and I didn't intend to stand in front of you for as long as it's gonna take to do this, but I wanna make a record. So what's the board's preference?
Well, it'd be nice if we would have had them in time for everybody to study them, first of all. So I'm not in real favor of looking at photocopies right now doing that, but you're certainly welcome to go over the whole document.
All right. Well, sure, good. Again, let me point out that I put this in overnight, UPS overnight. It's not the board's fault.
No, I understand.
But it was supposed to be here on Wednesday. It didn't come on Wednesday, and I wasn't advised. It didn't come on Thursday apparently because the office was closed, something. But I didn't learn until tonight. Had I known at any time, I would have driven them, the originals with the colored photocopies here for the board. It's not my intention or my desire that you guys would be in the dark about any of this because that doesn't help me.
I don't wanna speak for all the other members. What do you folks think?
What's the question?
I'm gonna read it.
Question is, do you want him to make photocopies right now and give them to supply them us now or wait for the UPS delivery and get them later? He's going to read it now anyway.
Okay.
You're okay with that?
Sure.
I mean, I'm okay listening to anything, everything.
Okay.
And if there's opportunity to have written things or illustrated things in front of me, that seems also useful, although I'm not sure if that opens up a challenge, you know, hard pressing if somebody else wanted to like give us a letter or something as part of the public hearing. Would that be appropriate? It also sounds like Ms. Plegy submitted something by email, an electronic version of the same document. Is that correct?
I did. I submitted it by email to the code enforcement officer and sent a copy to Derek by email at the same time.
Okay.
And you got that, Derek, right?
I received it.
So, I mean, I don't think anyone thinks that it shouldn't be part of the record.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I would agree with that.
We all agree on that.
So then it's a matter of, you know, how you wanna, you know, proceed. You know, this probably would not be the only opportunity to express those arguments, but if, you know, if you wanna read it all right now, that's fine.
Okay, well, I will... If the board agrees that you'll receive it as part of the record before voting on the application, I'm fine with that.
This, my preference for meeting, get a, what did you say, 14 pages?
Yeah.
To get like, kind of like a, just a high level, just give us a sense of kind of what you're thinking.
Yeah.
And then I have, I don't, if, I don't see how we would not make it part of the record, you know. We, you know, I think we would do that, right? And then we were, I, my sense is that as this plays out, there'll be other opportunities to, you know, to review it, address that, but I, yeah, that's what I, what I think.
Proceed.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I appreciate the board's flexibility about this. I will do a high-level version.
Yeah.
So, for the, for the public that's here, a restaurant use can be many things. That's why we have a site plan ordinance and a land use ordinance to apply standards to every application. A restaurant could be anything from McDonald's to Hanson's to a small airstream with a couple of outdoor lights by a picnic table. And all of them get dealt with the same way through your land use ordinance standards and your site plan review ordinance standards. So, I don't, I wanna talk about those standards. I don't have any particular feelings about a restaurant use versus any other commercial use, but a restaurant is commercial. You saw today that it's immediately adjacent to residential use, surrounded by residential uses. And it's important that I address some of these standards. I, for all of my work, when I represent either developers or neighbors, I talk to an engineer, and I didn't have anything to present to you today because, to paraphrase, this application is very light on the technical side. There isn't anything, other than the site plan, excuse me, the septic plan, there isn't anything technical. There is no technical study of any sort that accompanied this application. And so I couldn't even give you a peer review of what was there for that reason. But before I talk about what's not there, please let me talk about what's, what is there. This is a restaurant structure that, my floor plan is 49.5% as large as the first floor area of the existing residence. The residence is 1,923 square feet, first floor area, and that's far above 600 square foot one-bedroom required for the house to be an accessory to the commercial use. So in other words, for the commercial structure to be an accessory home occupation, it needs to be 25% or less of the size of the residence. For the residence to be accessory to the commercial use, it needs to be no bigger than 600 square feet. Here, we have a house that's bigger than that and a business that's bigger than that, both standards. What does that mean? In the RB zone, that means it's two principal structures, one commercial, one residential. And you need 40,000 square feet of lot area per principal structure in the RB zone in the district. That's 80,000 square feet. This lot, according to the application, has 60,984 square feet. It is 19,000 square feet short of lot area in order to accommodate a principal residence and a principal commercial structure. These are derived directly from land use ordinance standards. I gave you, in my written material, I gave you, I should also mention, part of this property's in the CFMA zone. It's a small part, and I don't believe that any of the structures are supposed to be on this. That's not shown on the plan, but there is a corner of it. When I look at your county maps, district map, there is a shore land overlay that has to be taken into account.
Commercial fisheries maritime activities zone.
Correct, and this is not a functionally maritime, functionally marine activity. Now, I'm not suggesting any of the activity is, that's proposed, is happening in the CFMA zone, and the accessway doesn't cross that zone. We're not dealing with that like we did with the campground. But there is an overlay, and it ought to be on the plan, isn't it? The reference to lot size and structures, it's four points, well, accessory structure, home occupation is defined in Article 11, and the activity or occupation has to be customarily conducted in or on a residential structure or property by a full-time permanent occupant, and it has to be carried on in no more than 25% of the total square footage of the single-family dwelling unit. Or if it's located in an accessory building, that building can be in no greater area, or area, no greater than 25% of the square footage of the single-family dwelling. That's definitions of accessory, of home occupation in Article 9. And as I said, the structure here, the restaurant's 49.5% of the home's square footage.
First floor of the home.
First floor of the home, yep. I'm talking first floor. We don't have any elevations of anything. We don't have elevations of the proposed use. We don't have elevations of the house in terms of total area, things like that, so I'm talking purely first floor area, square footage. The reference for 80,000 square feet is Section 4, Luzo, Section 4B2A, 40,000 square feet per principal structure. Accessory dwelling units in the RB zone have to be less than 600 square feet. That's Luzo Section 4A, 4A3. So without 80,000 square feet, this plan, as it's currently drafted, can't be approved. They need 80,000 square feet. Without it, they can't do it.
So you're agreeing there are two primary uses here?
Correct, because neither use qualifies under the definition of an accessory use. Home accessory use is great because you put a square footage, your ordinance has a square footage attached to that, and the house is bigger than 600 square feet, so by definition, it can't be accessory. Because the business is bigger than 25% of the house floor area, first floor area, that can't be accessory, even if the use is subordinate somehow to the residential use. The size alone makes it, takes it out of your definition of accessory. It's not home occupation.
Home occupation. Yeah, isn't that home occupation, though? That's not... I think we're in the RB zone, which, I think there's more allowed in the RB zone than a home occupation. Home occupation is like when someone like puts out a shingle, it's like a accountant or something, or, you know, something like that. That's not what we're talking about, right? We're talking about like commercial use.
We're talking about a principal commercial use and a principal residential.
Right. What does the home occupation have to do with it?
I was giving you some references in your ordinance to the size of, you know, of the structures. This is, there isn't any way to define this use as accessory to the residence, and I was giving you a reference in your ordinance to what often is considered accessory use, which is the home occupation.
Okay, but it's not actually relevant to...
The fill that was brought in...
Isn't part of this project?
It is part of this project.
Correct, it was permanent last year.
I'm gonna make a record, please.
Please, let's allow him to speak, Katie.
The fill that was brought in in the fall of 2023 was brought in with an application indicating that its purpose was to support a food truck. That's what the application said. It was granted by the code enforcement officer, Mr. Larson, without a permit. I was on the site today with you. It appears to me that there was some larger amount of fill added to that property. Looked like nearly half of the, all of the property on the left side of the original driveway is now filled with fill of some indeterminate depth. And that is larger than the pad that was approved by Mr. Larson. It's also respectfully, because it was offered as a food truck, and we hear just months later with this almost identical use, I argue that the board has to consider pre- and post-development, including the original topography, the original drainage, the original contours and vegetation of that lot pre-fill. We don't have any of that information. The, the septic and leach field, where's the existing septic and leach field for the house? That's, that is on the plan. I couldn't, I can't find it on the plan, and I don't know whether the plan is to tie in the restaurant's septic field to the, to the house, but it ought to be on the plan in terms of where these things are happening. If there is an existing septic tank, it's septic field, and that's going to be somehow within a shouting distance of the view field, and they're both going to coexist, the board needs to know that. We don't have any particular information about the well capacity other than anecdotal comment at the completeness hearing that there is 12 gallons per minute. There's no study. I don't know who performed the network. The board doesn't know who performed the network, and there's no scientific basis to support it. We don't know from the application what the water use capacity, what, how much water is going to be used by the proposed business. We know that, based on the septic plan, that they don't, the applicant doesn't think that this qualifies as a public water supply because the public won't be drinking from, from the water, but they're gonna have, the plan proposes two bathrooms, an office and kitchen, that has to have dishwashing, pot washing facilities. There's gonna be water usage. This plan doesn't tell us how much that's gonna be, how that's going to be affected, whether the well can serve it, and what the impact is on surrounding properties. None of that is there. As I alluded to a minute ago, there is no stormwater analysis, stormwater management analysis whatsoever. The map has some drainage arrows on it in the initial site plan, although there's no engineer's stamp or indication that the arrows were put on there by somebody that conducted any type of analysis or is licensed. I don't know who did it. There is no pre-development stormwater management analysis. We don't know what the stormwater flow was from the property, where it went, and what the capacity of the drainage systems were compared to now, and the topographical changes that are added by the fill and the septic area. Remember that septic area of the plan that shows increased fill depths of 30, I think it's 31 to 34 inches, something like that, that's going to change the stormwater flow analysis, and there isn't any stormwater flow analysis. There's no sedimentation analysis whatsoever. There's no erosion control information, science included in this. There are existing ditches that we saw around the outside of the property. There's no capacity analysis that the board can apply to site plan review and land use ordinance standards to determine the adequacy of those ditches to handle whatever is going to happen. And respectfully, I don't think we can do this anecdotally. You have to make findings based on what's in the application and tie it to the record, tie it to the ordinances. There are no baseline site conditions. There's no baseline natural vegetation indication. I submitted with my 14-page analysis, some pre-fill photographs showing a large number of trees that had been in the area prior to the fill being placed in the area. You can probably see some of the, some of the stumps when we were on site today.
We saw some large stumps today.
That had been there, but you can see that it's a long time of year. Obviously, this was taken in June. But the site, at least in front of the Wolfe Lot Residence, was fairly heavily vegetated, and it's almost not vegetated at all anymore, except for the standard of the thimper trees. There is no landscaping plan that's tied to horticultural standards. We don't know the species of the plants that are going to be put in. We don't know their separation. We don't know their spread, growth rate. None of the things that your ordinance calls for in terms of buffering and screening. Respectfully, that's why I'm here, right? You were at the, at the lot house. You saw the lot house from the property. Buffering and screening is just critical in a situation like this. The ordinance has standards in terms of blocking, being a shield of the proposed commercial use, and given the topography there, respectfully, that's gonna be challenging. A simple fence and a few trees helps, and I respect that the applicants have proposed that, but this is a complicated landscaping analysis in order to shield the house, the property, a porch that's uphill and directly in front of the proposed use. It's not as if the restaurant site's gonna be in some other part of the lot property. It's gonna be essentially right between them and the road, and right between the Wolfe property, the road, and the RB. Again, as I mentioned earlier, there no as-built elevations at all. There's a reference in the site plan that the proposed restaurants would be 28 feet above sea level. I don't know what that means in terms of above the existing topography.
I think it says a ground floor, yeah.
Yeah, so, so what we, your ordinance says that if a structure is going to be over 25 feet, then there has to be, the board has to make findings, and the applicant has to prove that there have been precautions taken to protect the view of the abutting neighbors. And there's none of that because we don't know. We don't know how tall this restaurant structure's gonna be. We don't know the impact of that on the neighbors because the elevations aren't there. There is no fence design. Mr. Mansalili was nice enough at the site walk to talk about a fence.
Are there view rights in the land that are, are there sort of easements, view easements in the...
There are no view easements. There's nothing, no deeded rights that could be enforced privately. There are requirements in the ordinance in terms of buffering and screening.
Yeah.
And, and they're enhanced if the building's taller than 25 feet. Again, the fence...
What were you saying about the fence?
There's no fence plan. Mr. Mansalili at the, at the site walk showed pictures to some board members about what might be planned for the site. That's not in the site plan. We don't have that. We don't know what the, what the fence design is. Combined with the trees, the fence is the buffer. It's the screen. It's critical, critical information, and it's not there. It doesn't exist.
They see proposed eight-foot wood privacy fence.
Yeah. Do you know what, I don't know what that's gonna look like. It could look like any number of things. When I represent, when I represent boards, I, I expect fence designs. I wanna see a design. I wanna know what it's gonna look like. Is it gonna be painted? Is it gonna be natural?
It's a design.
Is it gonna be, is it gonna be solid? Is it gonna have slats? And respectfully, I argue that's not what the one line description is added. The site plan is essentially a line drawing superimposed on a survey that had been performed by somebody else at some other time, and the board doesn't really have any more technical information than that. And based on, on that, based on the size of the structures, the fact that these are two principal uses, this plan, as it's currently drafted, as it's been presented to the board, can't be, can't be approved. Be happy to answer any questions if it would be helpful.
Yeah. You, and I, I don't have the written thing, so I may have explained it in the, in the document. I, I'm focused mostly on the position that it's, it's two principal uses. And I'm trying to, you know, you, you had some numbers you were throwing out there about comparing like the size of that to the size of the bedroom, like 25%. And I was trying to find that math and connect those dots. And I found the 25% of the home occupation piece, which I don't think is relevant. When I look at the definition of accessory structure or use, it talks about, I'll just read it.
Incidental accessory.
So maybe I'm reading the wrong one. Is it? Accessory structure or use, it's like on...
Yeah.
A use of structure was, which is, yeah, incidental accessory is subordinate to the principal use of the structure. Accessory use is, when aggregated, should not subordinate, subordinate the principal use of the lot. And so, Michael, what the heck does that mean? And I, that's what I think it means. I'm just kinda curious to get your reaction. I think, like, if you have a 10,000-square-foot lot, and you were to kinda look at that from the top and say, okay, you know, what, could you, could you, you're just looking at the lot, like, what's the use of that lot? And if you have a house or a residential component of that lot that's 5,001 feet and a, some other use, it's 4,999, I think you're probably, you might be okay, or I, like, or, like, how do you, how do you, how do you value, or how do you figure out what's, how something, something comes subordinate?
Well, okay, thank you. There are two, two different issues, right? One's a use and one's a structure.
Yeah.
Okay, so structures, I would suggest if you've got a, two structures, one of which is half the size of the other, which we have here, right? It's not accessory. It's not accessory. If it's, uh, I mean, that, that's why I raised the twenty-five percent issue. It's not clearly subordinate. Uses is more amorphous.
Yeah.
Right? The, here we've got a property and, and the board had the opportunity to be on-site. In addition to the site plan, it is clear that the commercial use is going to essentially occupy, with the septic field, with the parking, with the, uh, the picnic area, with the, um, restaurant building. It's gonna occupy more than half of the property physically. It's a, it's a substantial use that can't in any way be subordinate.
And that, I think, you know, if you were to... Like, I'm trying to figure out how we objectively... Like, how do you objectively figure out if, if something has sort of taken over? It's no longer an accessory. I think, you know, the way I'm thinking right now, and just let people know, is that if you look at the lot and you fairly kind of delineate the square footage that's allocated to one use as compared to the print of the other use which is residential, and yeah, you compare that square footage. And I don't, like, I think we're at sixty thousand square feet, something like that. So, that's what I would, that's what I would look at. And I, but is there anything else? Like, is that how you're thinking about it? Or what, you mentioned some other numbers, like twenty-five percent.
So, Tremont's ordinance doesn't put numbers on how to define accessory?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, it's like subordinate. That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Like, how do you do that?
Right. So, so, you know, uh, there are law court decisions that address that. Um, uh, if it's, if it's, um, the dis... The law court decisions that address it talk about a clear distinction, a clear difference. The accessory use has to be clearly subordinate. In other words, small structures have to be, have to be smaller and incidental to the residential use. Incidental, I think, is the critical word. For, for the use, incidental's by far the most critical word. Um, it's gotta be principally, if it's a residence and a, and a, and a accessory business use, that business has to be, if it's not a home occupation, it still has to be incidental to the residence. And incidental means significantly less than, much smaller than, much less significant than. And this is a fairly substantial commercial use. It's a restaurant.
Well, what if they, what if they... I'm just curious, I have this crazy idea, but I'm just, just trying to get it handled this. Like, let's suppose, 'cause I, I don't think it... Let's say they abandoned the house and they just said the whole thing is one massive restaurant.
Yeah. Yep. Then, then there's enough square footage. Then we're gonna...
It wouldn't be...
But then we have to talk about the site plan. Well, the residence is rented also. It's had a history of being rented.
Yeah, alright, yeah, yeah. Alright, that's, that's, okay.
You say the law court has weighed in on this?
The law court has weighed in on, on the, how to define or how it defines, um, accessory.
And, uh, can you name some of those sites?
I can't think off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to, to, to submit it.
Was one of them town of Shapley, the Skittles?
Shapley is one of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you doing your, what are you, what are you doing up there? He's got his name in made. I swear to God, he's made. Okay.
I occasionally do some homework.
Yeah, the lower...
Shapley's an old one, but yeah.
Still, still, no. I confess, but you go ahead. You would see this.
No, I'm sure we'll hear about it here soon enough.
Is there anything else that I can answer?
That, go ahead.
Okay, I was just gonna ask you to, um, take us back to the, I think it's eighty thousand square foot total.
Yeah.
And it's sort of what Brett asked, but it, like, that... You're saying that if there are two principal structures, each of them needs to be forty thousand square feet?
Yes.
Do you have that citation in front of you?
Yeah.
I did see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the, it's, it's right in the RB.
It's the RB's own definition. It is, uh...
The incremental area of, or principal non主...
Four B, two A.
Right, right. And so, if the lot were...
Eighty.
Eighty or a hundred and twenty, you could, you could, you could line up principal structures as long as you have forty thousand square feet per structure. Or if you didn't have to. If you had, like I was gonna say, you know, made the house part of the restaurant, you could, I think you could do that too.
Decrease the size of the restaurant by what? Sixteen hundred square feet?
Right, oh, alright.
Hold on, Derek. We'll get to you in a second here.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just kinda batting things around here. Yeah.
Were there, were there other question, any other questions here? Um, the water.
It's my understanding that, uh, well drillers have on their cap the gallons per minute. You don't feel that's adequate?
No, what I'm saying is, how's that capacity relate to the restaurant use? We don't know. We don't, we don't have any kind of capacity analysis with the restaurant's gonna use. It doesn't exist, and whether this water supply's gonna be adequate, how that's gonna impact the, the...
And even though they propose paper plates, paper cups, and that sort of thing, we still have the bathroom and, and hand washing, things like that.
Dishwashing, you've gotta do, if you're cooking in pots, you can't cook, you're not allowed to cook in plastic. Not feasible. You gotta wash the, the, uh, the pots, the steam trays, whatever you're using.
But there's no snow cones. Were you here for that meeting?
I did.
Okay.
I did. It was completeness review. I did. By the way, the, I mean, the site plan that you've been given, you were told anecdotally again that it was gonna be paper products, but that's not part of the plan, right? You could obviously condition the, uh, something on that type of use. But it's not in. That's my, my, my biggest problem with all of this tonight is that there's a lot that's not in.
Thank you. Unless somebody else has a question, move. Get to somebody else here. I think Derek wants to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wise man once told me, "If you throw a lot of shit against the law, someone's gonna stay." I think that's what we're dealing with right here. Uh, so, for the first thing, the primary use, uh, accessory use, I think we can all understand that the, to view it as an accessory use, it's smaller in size. It's used for half the time of the year as the residence. And the lot itself, where the tables and stuff are, are being used for half of the year for another use. So, the structure itself is clearly accessory use to the primary resident. And it's certainly not under home occupation, which brings up the twenty-five percent.
No, we, we understand it's not home occupation.
Uh, to the next point on the, uh, fill application that was already approved four years ago in early April, um, that has clearly been used for other uses besides just... Uh, plus, I'd also like to clarify, it's not a restaurant, it's a takeout. That distinguishes a lot of things going forward as far as table use, you know, somewhere. All of that stuff with usable water use. So, I would like the board to make a decision on discussion about that previous permit and if it is considered within this application, which we feel it's not. Because the existing permit that was done over a year ago brings up a lot of questions as far as stormwater runoff and things that we are not applying for in this application. So, it should be determined if that's even a point of discussion anymore, that permit for fill. Under no part of the ordinance do I see a part that requires showing utility lines, paths of running. Uh, it's clearly shown in the application of the sewer plan, of the new wastewater plan, is for this restaurant and the rest, and the house. It's shown in the, uh, stormwater, I'm sorry, in the, in the septic design. Uh, it shows being able to put a house, a takeout, which they define, uh, which is very specific because the restaurant uses larger numbers for usage. There's no, uh, public restroom. That is a requirement of a restaurant. Because it's not a restaurant, it's a takeout. Also, in the septic design...
What, are you saying that this restroom isn't a public restroom?
Which restroom you...
In, in the kitchen building.
Uh, that is not a public restroom.
Are you having porta potties?
Which... I'm sorry, I'm lost where you're talking about a restroom and porta potties.
You're showing proposed, uh, takeout kitchen floor or in the takeout kitchen, single-story restroom located inside.
Sorry, so that, that should be noted. It's not public use. It's a takeout.
It's not a public restroom?
No. It's not allowed in the septic plant.
Are you gonna have porta potties?
They're not required to have restaurants. Takeout. Because it's not a restaurant. Which comes into the water use. There's, 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 you know, there's this defined in the septic plan. So, when they do an analysis on the size of the field they're providing, so if they were wanting a full-size restaurant, then yes, they would have to go by standards to provide all the extra usage. But it's, it's, it's not a restaurant.
But that wasn't indicated. I assumed that this was a public restroom.
It's, it's not, it's not public. We know that.
Is there a porta potty over to quiet side?
No, no. No, it's just not a requirement to the state.
So...
That's operating as a food truck anyway.
Correct.
Portable food truck.
Actually, the state has changed. If you're anybody other than a construction site, you're only allowed to have a porta potty for seven consecutive days.
Really? Where they going down Silk Cove?
So, I'd like to move on to the, the buffering. Uh, I think we have adequately shown, um, fast-growing evergreens. I've shown the spacing on the trees, which references the ordinance on spacing, minimum requirements that are staggered. Uh, we've asked the representative lawyer to, you know, provide feedback if they would like more trees. They've never responded. Um, so, the Klon family is willing to add more trees to provide more buffering. We just seem to get nothing from the Wolf family. Um, the fence, we feel is clearly located. Uh, there is no standard in the ordinance telling, you know, requiring the lunts to provide design details, types of wood, color, size, it's eight-foot, it's privacy. And it says one or the other. It says a fence or trees. We're trying to provide both. And it's not the Wolf family's fault that Wolf's property sits high above theirs. Um, they're trying their best to buffer it the best they can. And they're still open to adding more buffering if that's necessary. But there's a, there's a certain level of expectation you can ask them to provide.
I'm confused by something you just said.
Right.
What, the plan I'm looking at has, has both a wood privacy fence and evergreen trees for buffering.
It shows both.
But, but you said something about... It shows both, but are you gonna have both?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe I misunderstood what you were saying there.
The ordinance suggests you should provide one or the other for vibes and buffering.
Okay.
We feel that both were necessary and helpful. Try and be helpful. As, uh, reference to the elevation of the, of the structure, um, it's only a single-story. Uh, the elevation of the roof ridge is not on the plan. Doesn't classify anywhere in the ordinance to provide that. It just states that it cannot be above, uh, I believe, forty feet. If it's twenty-five feet, then you need oriented to minimize direction to impact. It's perpendicular to Wolf property. Um, and it will not be even twenty feet tall. It's expected sixteen feet, a single, single-story.
But you haven't indicated that on the plan or in your, in your...
We can provide the roof height. But there's, you know, common sense would dictate the, a narrow building like that wouldn't be forty feet tall. And it is oriented in the minimum direction to provide the least amount of view of the structure itself. So, that's the most you can ask for with the... If anything is above twenty-five feet.
Was there anything else?
Um, I just would like the board to, to make a vote on accessory use and, uh, determine if the, um, existing permit in place for fill has anything to do with this, this application that's currently in front of you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments from anybody? Yes, ma'am?
Um, we received a...
Could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have a grant.
Okay.
My husband is Rick Wolf.
Okay, you are the abutter here.
I am Wolf.
Yep.
Represented by Mr. [inaudible].
Yes.
Okay. Um, neighbors across the, directly across the street from the site, um, provided us with a letter, in their words, to provide to the board. Um, I can read it. I made copies. I can give it to you. They were unable to be here.
Probably should've submitted them through the code enforcement officer, but go ahead. You're welcome to read it, please.
Well, they're sending it to her.
Okay, okay.
But they wanted to make sure
Okay.
that it was available for...
Why don't you read it?
Alright.
And, and who are they?
These are Paul and Jackie Burner. They live directly across the street. Their address is five Blackaker Lane is what they have on their letter.
What's her last name again? Sorry, Burner?
Burner, B E R N E R.
B E R N E R. Thank you.
And I made copies.
Yep, okay.
Okay. To the town of Tremont Code Enforcement Officer. As you know from our numerous phone conversations, we have been following and inquiring about the proposal and plan for 132 Harbor Drive over the past year. As the project continues, so have our concerns and objections about its direct impact on our home and the neighborhood. We feel we have not been given information on a timely basis, and the information we have, have been given is incomplete and misleading. With respect, we are strongly opposed, excuse me, to the project and we plan, and we ask that the proposal not be approved. When we were first informed of the project, we were told by the Lunds and Katie Higgins that it was intended to be a quote "small food truck" from which lobster rolls would be served. This was the only information we were given. Yet we have come to discover that the project was always to be significantly larger than that. While this project has been going on for over a year, it was only one month ago that we learned of its true scope. We received a letter from the town informing us that instead of a small food truck, there will be a sixty-eight-foot trailer platform supporting a takeout restaurant only fifteen feet from 102A and directly across the street from our home. During the initial stage of the project in 2023, we were asked by Verset to give an easement to the Lunds to relocate the power pole on their property to our property so that their driveway could be larger and accept traffic more easily. We gave them that permission as good neighbors because we were led to believe that it would be a small takeout operation and there wouldn't be that much increased traffic. If we had seen the plans that were submitted one month ago, we never would have grant, we, right, we never would have granted permission for the push-pack pole assessment. These new plans show there will be substantially more traffic than we were told. Traffic along 102A, especially at that particular spot, which is at the crest of a hill with poor visibility for approaching cars, is difficult to navigate at best and could be dangerous. In fact, we have to be very careful just exiting our own driveway. Since 102A is a state road, we request that the Maine Department of Transportation revisit the proposed impact on traffic in road stations. We feel that this large-scale project is not in keeping with the quote "quiet side" and the residential aspects of.
Please, please.
It will have a direct effect on our property, which is only thirty feet from the picnic table eating area, which could potentially seat sixty customers. There will be an increase in noise, light pollution, emissions, and exhaust of restaurant byproducts. It will also increase traffic and traffic hazard. We ask the town to reject the proposal and consider all residents, excuse me, as it pertains to this project. If that is not the case, we ask the town to put in place limitations and implement measures as to operational hours, speaker systems for order announcements, canned and live music, buffer areas with hedges or similar at the edge of the road, and prevent vehicles from parking under 102A. Sincerely, Paul Burner and Jackie Frederick.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I'm Richard Wolf. My wife Kathy just read that letter. I've been working on this project, trying to figure out what's going on for over a year and a half and before Katie was even hired. We've got obviously a big problem. We're the ones that live at the house that overlooks this food truck, restaurant. Last summer, when they first started clearing and grading, we were sort of surprised at that because, you know, we knew it was all related to a future food truck, but there was no application for one. The CEO approved it. I was told at the time that it was four hundred and ninety-nine cubic yards and the area was supposed to be twenty-five hundred square feet. The area you saw today that has gravel on it is fourteen thousand square feet. If it's even one foot in depth, which is even greater, I believe, that would be fifteen hundred cubic yards. That should have come before you. That's not in the scope of authority of the CTO. Our concerns are many. Privacy is a big deal for us and we moved here because it was quiet. It was a residential neighborhood. Maybe people would say, well, you should look at the zoning. Well, you've got the screwy zoning that ever existed. I was a real estate developer back in Fairfax County, so I understand some. But I never thought that, you know, in the midst of just residential properties, a pop-up would like this would occur or be allowed. But the privacy for us is, is two ways. We don't want to look at it, but we don't want them looking at us either. I mean, all the people that are eating there at the picnic tables, if they're not looking at the harbor, they're looking at our house. And that makes it difficult for us. We don't want to hear live music. We can hear Hanson's all the way down past us when they have live music. We don't want canned music. We don't want any sort of music to occur on that site. The light pollution, I mean, one of the tenants of the, the new comprehensive plan is the night sky. But these lights don't get turned off when it gets dark. You're not seeing the night sky. So if they have lights, we would request that they have some way of turning them off when the closing hours are up. So we also don't want, screening of this property is very difficult. And, you know, the code is, I, we understand that it says that it needs to be screened on the side and on the back. And what they're proposing in the plan doesn't, doesn't do that. Doesn't respect the cemetery. Some people have a real problem with that, that this is right next to the cemetery. When people come to the cemetery, you know, they're very quiet, they're very respectful. And if all this is going on next to it, it could be a, a problem. It's a town cemetery. It's historic. So, you know, we, we'd like to see the maximum buffers that could be put on the property. You know, a few trees, you know, that may grow up, you know, ten feet in five years. We're gone. You know, we're dead. You know, so hopefully. We don't want to have to wait forever to see these trees grow up. Fences, you know, there's, we agree the idea of the fence can tree because as people drive in, then their headlights are going to shine right up on us. And, and that would be, you know, a real problem for us. So, does that miss anything? Trying to think on my feet here. I think those are the major thing. There's some other neighbors here. They probably can't speak. So I'll turn the floor and then if I remember anything, I'll jump back down.
Thank you. Mike?
I'd like just a few minutes to speak. I'm a landscaping designer by trade. I don't hold a degree of any type. I've been before this board many times. I understand what landscape buffering is to this town. It's an important thing, especially business for residents. I just had a project that was permitted and spoke with my neighbor on what their expectations were. They came to me and I explained what I was doing.
Are you speaking about your subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
So me and, and the Lund family have been friends of mine for a long period of time. When they told me that, you know, they were planning on doing this, of course, I tried to, to help them out. I said that, you know, the best thing you can do is take your neighbors into account of what you do. He said, well, this is what, you know, Derek and I are discussing. We're doing these plans. And so I took him over to my property and I showed him this fence, which I wasn't really.
The one you showed us at the, yeah.
And it's an eight-foot solid cedar fence, which we have lumber milled out right now to do. It's rough-sawn. Show the applicant as well. And this is a picnic table next to it to show you in reference. And it's a nail spacing with the lures. My neighbor has told me there is no light pollution from my property to hers. And this is the parking area. I want to help them in any way I can. And I said, have your neighbors told you what they expect? What, what, what do they want? You know, because if you don't know what they want, you can't put it on the plan. And all they have told them is what's wrong with this application. And I don't think, in, in respect to the applicant, I don't think that's fair to them because that just keeps the ball rolling down the hill. There's no finish line for the lures. Secondly, we took and rode to four different stores last week and reviewed lights. And we had a big discussion about lights, not just the type of light, but the height of the light, where it should be positioned on the building, where it should be positioned, the, the, the ground lighting to stay low along the fence so that it doesn't intrude on the neighbors. We also went over something called that Mr. Wolf brought up is, you know, the dark, you know, dark sky and how important that is to our neighborhood. Myself, I love looking at the stars. I like being able to see it, not just on my neighbors' properties, but online. I like dark skylights. So we went through all these stores and we found the ones with the least amount of light pollution. And they have a little, they have a little sticker on them now. You can go into Lowe's, you can go to Home Depot. It's dark sky, dark sky compliant lights. And all the lights that Mr. Lund has picked out are dark sky compliant. And they don't allow, you know, that, that's not a requirement in the ordinance, but with the level of activity, I thought that it was important to have that. And I would like to say that I've also spoke with Steve Stanley, a local electrician contractor that has light sensing or light detecting equipment. And after discussions and telling him what the Lunds were doing, he said, I would be happy to loan that equipment to show what the light pollution would be at the property line or from their driveway of, of what the Lunds are proposing. Try to be proactive and do the right thing for the neighbors, I think is really, really important. And I think the Lunds are li- willing to give a little bit in order to make, you know, their experience when they're here more enjoyable too. But their lawyer, I, I read, I read, I read all of, of the, all the pages of his notes that he sent. Nowhere did it tell what they expect. It told what was wrong, but not what's expected. What, 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 what does the homeowner want to make this right? And nowhere, nowhere does it say, we want trees here, we want more of this, we want a taller fence. I mean.
Isn't that their prerogative?
What's that?
Isn't that their prerogative? I mean, they.
If this, if there's something they're requesting, I, I, you know, it, obviously they have got some concerns. But, you know, to be a good neighbor, I think it's, it's worth talking to your neighbors about those concerns in depth. And showing, you know, walking the site and showing where you want trees. We didn't even have, we didn't even have the butlers on the site walk today. They've probably never stepped foot on the property, to be honest. And, and how can you say you don't like the site plan if you haven't even been on the site? Just being practical here. That's, you know, you, you're really, you know, we're all, you know, trying to work with each other. His family's been here for as long as mine, probably six or seven generations. And we have to live with whatever we do. Just like me with my business or me with my neighbors. All my neighbors know what I did. You know, they, they know what I was doing for a project I met with them. I first, I had a light that was on my garage that was too high. And one of the neighbors voiced that concern. I lowered it.
Mike, could you limit your comments to this particular project and not what you did?
It relates, Mark, it relates to, to what's going on here. And that, and that's why, my point is that in fairness to the applicant, they haven't shown a finish line. And I think that they, i- if there's something that they want on that plan in regards to buffering or lighting, whether it be trees or fences or a particular type of light, they should voice that. And we haven't seen any of that. Zero. And, and it's been asked. So if, if, if you just completely oppose something, I guess that, that, that's where it's, where it's at. But if you don't, you know.
Isn't that where it's at?
I think that is where it's at.
So that's where it's at?
Yeah. But we've also done the fence and the screening that's been asked.
Look, there's a threshold question here. We don't even get to the weeds and the grass and all that stuff, that noise, until we get past the first question. Right, of whether, of whether this, you know, is a, is a problem in terms of how, of how, you know, what's being proposed and the space they have to do it. That's a legal question. We don't, we don't even get to the, the trees and the, who cares about that? The, the threshold question I want to hear about, and I'm hoping people at some point can, can outline for me, is, is how we get past this issue of, how, how, how do we make this work with the accessory use piece? When, when, when they do talk about, it is possible that you could subordinate, I, I think you could, right? It's possible to have a use or subordinate principal use. So that's what I'm focused on. All this other stuff is noise right now to me. That's my, how I view it.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I'm just, I just, I just want to let people know off the, that's the, I, I could care.
I, I thought you said that was only on the home occupation.
Now, you still, so the numbers that he was pulling are irrelevant. But you still have, there's still an issue of, and I'm, at least in my mind, I haven't thought it through yet. If you categorize the, the building and the breast or takeout as an accessory use to the, to the principal use of, as a residence, it, 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 it does need, it's, well, there's a definition of accessory use. And at some point, you can have that accessory use equal or exceed the current principal use. And now you have two. And so now, and then you need forty thousand square feet a piece. I mean, I think there's a legal question that we all said as to whether, how that works. I don't know. In fact, I'm still thinking about that. I, I think we're, we might get a lawyer to help us. I don't know any really that are any good of this stuff. But I, I'm still trying to think about how that works. I don't, I, I, there's something to that. I don't know yet. Does anyone else feel differently?
Because I would just clarify, like, I usually feel a little differently in that, or, it sort of seemed like you didn't want to hear other, about anything other than that.
These are all like factual issues about like the buffering and the, you know, whatever. You don't even get to those questions until you get, until you get past the threshold issue of whether this meets the RB, like you even, it even meets the block, you know, requirements, the basic permits of what you can do on a piece of land in the RB zone, that sixty thousand square feet.
So I guess my differing perspective already would be that, like, I'm open to hearing a range of things that are on people's minds, whether or not they pertain to that. Just want to make, the public understand that, like, you can share anything.
And I know, I, the, the, I'm not, I'll tell you, the thing where it's only used part of the year.
Right, I understand that. And I understand it's a good question to bring up to, to define accessory use. And you guys need to understand exactly what that means. What we would like to have, given timeline is a concern for the family. They want to be able to build and start making money this summer. And if we keep discussing one item, move on and then move to another item, and we keep going meeting after meeting, what I would like to be able to establish is a punch list of items that were yes or no. What things are we trying to address and discussing so we can look at them in a quicker manner and move forward? So.
Well, we are moving through the process, right?
Things may not move as quickly as you, you hope, but we're going to do our best to move it along.
That's all I ask. As long as we're looking at each item and yes or no.
I think what you're saying is the, in your mind, you have to answer the primary use question. Are there two primary uses here?
That's right.
Before you move on, anything else?
To me, that's how I look at it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And, and I'm, I'm confused about that myself, so.
I don't know. I, I don't know. I'm not convinced, I'm not convinced either way, but I, I think it's, it's an interesting.
Something we've happened encountered before and.
Yeah.
Those fourteen pages would have really been nice to have.
To have before this.
To look so that we could have investigated, so we could have investigated.
I think you'll have time to do the. Mr. Pelagi?
Thank you. Dan Pelagi again. First of all, if the board is inclined to continue the public hearing, I'd be happy to brief the issue and provide the board with legal citations to this issue that Mr. Whitman's concerned about. I'm concerned about it too, and I'd be happy to give you loss, law court and other references. I know Mark's got his animated manual that has all their cases in it, but I'm, I'm happy to address that. This was the day for the public hearing and, you know, if we get through it and the board's going to close the public hearing, we'll have another opportunity. If you keep the public hearing open, I'd be happy to add that. With respect to other issues, their lawyer, me, right, has represented any number of people over on that side of the room. And what their lawyer wants is a professional landscaping plan that deals with the complex topography of, of this area. And without that, you really can't assess whether it meets the ordinance's needs. If these properties were next to each other in parallel and level on the same plane, it's a much easier thing to tell your neighbor what is helpful in terms of buffering and screening. As I said, Kathy and Rick appreciate the concept of the fence and adding trees. I don't think it's adequate. I don't think there's any way to assess that it's adequate. And, and I think that that's why a professional landscaping analysis, horticulturist, would be helpful. Because that's how you decide how a complex area gets screened. You have very strict standing, screening standards in your ordinance. Talks about a complete visual screen within a certain amount of time. You have species, spread rates, growth rates, plantings, things like that that aren't addressed. And, and that's what the neighbors want, just so you know. addressed, and, and that's what the neighbors want, just so you know.
Any other comments? A lot of people there.
Hi, my name's Jen Warner. We live right next to the Lunds and all these people. I just want you guys in the Lunds to know that, you know, I think it's a great, great thing that you guys are doing. MBI, we need it on the quiet side. This is not a quiet side place anymore. This island has, is a tourist island, and there's not enough eateries around here anyways to feed everybody that comes. And I also feel that, you know, people going in and out of that driveway, maybe, it's going to be great. It's going to slow the traffic down a little bit on the road, the main road anyway, so... But I am not worried about anything that you guys are doing, and I think it's great.
Thank you. Mike?
This is a quick rebuttal to Mr. Puleggi's statement on, you know, meaning a landscape horticulturist or landscape architect, designer, whatever you want to call it. Your ordinance specifically references evergreen trees. We don't need to know species. We know, we need to know the height after so many years and, and the spacing and that they're in staggered rows. There is no, there's nothing in it that says you have to have a landscape horticulturist. We're not in Bar Harbor. It's different here. We don't have those sort of standards. We have the description that is given in the ordinance, and that is it. And as you can see from missile points drawing, it does show the trees and it shows the spacing, and it references the ordinance. Evergreen planted belt, some towns refer it to as. And it's spruce, it's usually spruce, fir, pine, green giant arboroides, because they grow fast.
Thank you. Mr. Lund?
I'd just like to speak on the traffic, and I don't really see that the traffic going by to the lighthouse or through seawall, what, a few people may or may not be stopping at the takeout. I don't see that traffic stopping, and I don't really see it changing being a problem. You know, you're going to have the same traffic, the people that are going to the lighthouse around seawall, Ferry Terminal or wherever they're going, are already going there. And we've had the study done by the state that said there's room in a 25 mile an hour zone, which is what it is. I don't perceive that it being a huge traffic issue. And, and in this ordinance, it says that not, they're already not supposed to park on the side of the road, which I have many, many pictures since I've been studying this, where they're doing it already anyway, and taking pictures of the sunset, it's there. So I just wanted to state that there's, the traffic's already going by. A few might be stopping in, maybe they're not, but I don't perceive it becoming a huge traffic jam or, or issue with the traffic that's already flowing by. Hope the Lunds go get themselves a bike.
Why are you laughing? Our, yeah, our ordinance really doesn't have anything to do with the traffic that goes by, it's just the traffic that goes in and out.
Well, it's a concern, I was just saying, I mean, there's only, what, eight, 10 parking spots? How many people are actually stopping by every hour or whatnot? I don't, I don't see it being a huge impact is all I was getting at. Maybe you have a different opinion, that's just mine.
Got a couple more. Yes?
Hello, thanks for hearing, for hearing me. I'm Bill Colleton, and I'm up the hill right next to Rick and Kathy's house, kind of in back of it. And so, obviously, the impact on our property will be less than it is on theirs, but there will be an impact on our property. Just to let you know who we are, we, we bought our house about 15 years ago, and we, previous to that, for about 30 years, were residents. And we've, like quite a number of people who do, we fell in love with Bass Harbor. We call it beautiful Bass Harbor. We also like the community, and we would like to be at least part-time residential, you know, in some way, part of the community. So I feel uncomfortable standing and opposing a plan for someone to, you know, start business. I have nothing but respect for business people and for especially people that start their businesses. Nevertheless, I have to stand also in defense of my enjoyment of my own property and, and my wife, too, by the way, my wife Tony is here and she'll have a statement also. What I'm concerned about is the traffic is, especially in the evening, cars coming and going, turning in and shining lights, you know, up, up towards the hill. Is there going to be a sign? Will there be spotlights on the sign like there is at Hanson's?
They've set no signs.
Okay, so that's already in there, and I didn't know that, so I apologize. But still, I think that there will be an increase in, in traffic. I, I looked at the, the plan and it had all these picnic tables. So people are going to take out from the restaurant, walk 10 feet and sit at a picnic table. You know, to me, that's, I, we can argue whether that's a restaurant or a takeout restaurant, but frankly, the takeout part of it is not the same as the takeout that I'm used to, where you, you go in and you take it out to the home. So there is going to be a lot more activity, there is, there are going to be a lot more people on the property, especially towards the evening. If the business is going to draw as it is expected to draw, I'm sure it is expected to draw, they were talking about scores of trips, of automobile trips at our last hearing, I think they said 40, but I might have gone wrong. Nevertheless, there is going to be an increase in business down there. And, you know, when, when we finally bought here and when we wanted to, to stay here, by the way, we come up in all seasons, so we're not, you know, summer people per se. We, we come up, we've been here every, every single month of the year, we like certain seasons that are not the tourist seasons. And, and, you know, we come to enjoy the property and to enjoy being here. And especially, we come to enjoy the quiet. And the one thing I know I'm not going to be able to do anymore is to sit on my porch in the evening and watch the light go down over the harbor and listen to the birds kind of settle in, nature kind of settle down for the night. Not going to happen anymore. I might have to go, I guess, in the back of the house and, you know, set up out there, but it won't be the same. So I just want you to know that when you're dealing with putting a business into an area that is purely residential at, at this point, except for maybe a lawyer's office in the house, I understand that that's different than what we're talking about here. When you're talking about doing that to that whole section, I mean, really from Flatiron down, really down, I guess, to where the, the road cuts in to go down to the seafood catch, it's all residential. And when you start moving your commerce in there, when you start developing in that area, you are going to impact the peaceful enjoyment of property of individuals who have bought properties, who have improved properties, who have taken good care of the properties and tried to be good neighbors. So I ask you to just keep that in mind, too, and thank you.
Thanks. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Tony Tomac Colleton, Bill is my husband. He really stated many of my concerns eloquently, but I just want you to know that I am concerned about the way the hill crests coming from the lighthouse, going towards Hanson's and Flatiron Road. When you get to the top of that hill, if you are going 25 miles per hour, and let's be honest, many, many vehicles traveling that road are going a lot faster than 25 miles per hour. But when you get to the top of that road at the crest of the hill, you have five seconds after you've, you've gotten to the top and you are passing directly in front of the driveway. That's not a lot of time for speeding vehicles. I hope you're right. I hope that it would slow traffic down, but I am concerned about that. I don't want to see anybody hurt or injured because of traffic going in and out of that establishment. And there will be more, if it's a successful business, you're going to have a lot of people using that driveway. It's not going to be like somebody going to a hairdresser appointment or somebody going to a lawyer's office. It's, it's going to be a lot more traffic on that road, and I'm very concerned about that. There are, I have the other concerns too, the noise, the light pollution, the changing character of the neighborhood. It's, it's a bit disconcerting. I understand development is good. We want to promote development for our community, we certainly do, but it's kind of hard knowing that all of a sudden, in the middle of your neighborhood, pop, there's going to be a commercial establishment that wasn't there when you moved in. I mean, we're not the people who move into the country next to a farm and then get angry at the farmer because they have animals on their property. It's, this, we're not the people who move next to an airport and then get upset because airplanes are flying over their house. This is a change for us and our neighborhood. We, we love the authentic feel of Bass Harbor. We don't want to live in Bar Harbor. We don't want the Bass Harbor community, the authenticity of this year-round working community to become a bar harbor that is simply a draw for tourists. So that, that's all I have to say.
Do you know how many businesses have been in that area?
Yeah.
A lot more.
How many years?
A lot more.
Four businesses in that area.
All locals allowed.
And it was local people.
Yeah, local.
If you bought a, if you buy a place in a residential business, you should be prepared for having a business move in. You knew that when you bought the property, it was in residential business. And the, and, and if someone wants to put a business in and they meet the requirements, and I think if the, if we, if I held up on this lock size and whatever, I think we should get that taken care of. But, you know...
What, what you're saying is not unfamiliar to this board, okay? Your concerns, it's come before us many times with campgrounds and things like that, and, and we, we understand it, but we're limited in what we can do. We have an ordinance here, okay, which allows certain things, okay? And as long as people meet the requirements of the ordinance, they can do it, okay? And so that's our job, is to determine that. I mean, some of the things you say, I, I mean, I understand, I mean, you, you, yeah, that's all I'm going to say. You were going to say something?
No, no, I mean, I think earlier a comment was made about, by Mr. Wolf, the wonky code, our code or our zoning is, you know, wonky. You know, it, it is residential business, it is, and it's one, something that we, you know, we've dealt with, we've dealt with as part of the comprehensive plan. And, you know, it's, it's, it's what we have right now.
Yeah. I'm not dismissing your concerns, I'm just saying that we're limited in what we can do. Certain concerns we can address, other ones we can't.
You know, I will say to the traffic thing, what's, what's interesting to me is there used to be actually more restaurants in Bass Harbor, used to be more business there. So I find, it is fascinating to hear about the concern, about the change, where actually we've gone the other way with less business, and so it's kind of like one coming back. There was a restaurant, a couple restaurants downtown, downtown in Bass Harbor that are no longer, no longer there.
Hopkins Store was two across the road.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's actually a lot more business, you know, years ago.
Best ice cream around.
Yeah. But, in any event.
Ma'am? Hi, I'm Sean. I live over on the Mill Bowway, so I live off of the other miles, if you like to call it, on the sidewalk. And it's fantastic. It's a game changer as far as the neighborhood and the rural nature we've spoken about. And I noticed that we have referenced the comprehensive plan several times, and the comprehensive plan actually has a zone in it, now I know we haven't voted on it, but it has been approved by the state, that this is in the Village Worth Zone, which is named around Bass Harbor. So I'm just pointing out that the comprehensive plan that our colleagues of town people put together suggests that. Another thing, when we're talking about businesses, maybe if you have to get into this, I know it's residential neighborhood, but it's mixed, right? Because anytime you throw a trap on your wharf or on your lawn, it's a business. And so I'm really curious about how you would deem something commercial or residential when we have a lot of mixed use. I'm also curious how, and I don't have an answer, so I'm just, I'm just saying partly, how we define businesses, because if you go up and down any of our streets, it's residential, but I'm telling you, there may already be next to me, right? And so what's business? We're making money there, and I know that's something that's also in our comprehensive plan. Additionally, I just wanted to say, as far as natural resources, that's in our comprehensive plans, so I know that this is being addressed with trees and growth, but it's also part of the stewardship of our ultimate, our fishing families, and looking for ways to make that sustainable. And also, safe transportation, number four in our comprehensive plan, but a piece of that comprehensive plan is making our town more walkable, and I can't tell you how fantastic I think it would be to have a couple more places for us to meet on the sidewalk and cheer each other over foods or ice creams, because it's wonderful getting down to the tree school on the sidewalk, that's how I've met most of my neighbors. So I just wanted to put that out there, thank you. And I've got a lot of new questions, but I think we, we have some space here for, for business as, as a number one piece of our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like commercial.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else? Yes, Gary?
I just want to say I'm afraid for the future of this community and local people, as difficult as this process has been up to this point, requiring and talking about and kind of pushing back against people that don't have licenses to get permits and hiring licensed individuals when it's not required, and the fact that this process should be able to be done by a common citizen. And I just feel like we're, we're kind of setting the stage for this town to evolve and it's something different, and I, I think that it shouldn't be as difficult to, you know, the average person, working person in this community to establish a business. It's already hard enough to make a living here, and...
Intense.
Just take that, please.
Thank you. Uh, nobody else, I see. What do you think? Any comments from board members here? Questions? Close the public hearing?
Well, I guess, I guess the question would be for the closed public hearing, do we want to leave it open?
For comments later on?
For comments about open questions, and do we want to define those questions for further consideration, or, I don't know, if we have other options about scheduling a different public hearing or a different way of exploring those questions, or do we want to do that outside of the hearing process?
If we leave it open, do we have to reschedule it for a date certain?
I believe so.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I think I would just close it, and then if we, but when we get to, I'm trying to think, what happens next? Would we go to substantive review?
Yeah, we'll get there. I think we're going to have to be talking about some, some other things.
Because I think, you know, as far as substantive review, you're going to have to, as a threshold, just determine that it meets the, you know, zoning requirements. And that will, I think, probably result in additional submissions, I'm thinking, for us to add to the record, and whether it needs to be the part of, is it a public hearing or some other, some other way to do that, I don't know. But I would, I agree, I think I would, so... Did you make a motion?
He made a motion to close it.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second on the table to close the public hearing. Any discussion?
I guess my question, which Brett started to sort of, he's also asking the same question, but what is the process for getting more information from sources of the applicant? It's clear to me that we can ask the applicant for more submissions, but if we wanted to ask somebody else for information, can we do that during substantive review?
Well, if you remember during, like, some of the campground things, that we allowed both sides, people who in opposition... both sides, people who are in opposition and people, the applicant themselves, to file certain things. And we usually set a date of when things are due.
Yep.
I don't want to touch on this now, but I think when we get to the actual application, we're gonna be making some decisions that's gonna allow us to get some more information for ourselves. Let's put it that way right now.
In other words, I think we can close it for right now. That's great. I'm sorry to put that.
Okay. So, we have a motion, a second on the table, to close the public hearing at eight o'clock. No further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, folks. Now, I kind of wish we did take captain's tails before captain's quarters. Everybody wants to be captain, nobody wants to be a mate, I guess. But I think we can quickly get through the preliminary plan for Peter Libhart's or the Libhart family's captain's quarters subdivision.
We can't do like a group, we can't do like a group motion, we gotta do this in individual.
Because this is preliminary plan, go back to subdivision.
Is this the one where we have to individual motion?
Because this is preliminary plan, this.
Oh, this is, oh, this is, I don't, we haven't done this.
Do you need a motion in each one of these, or a motion?
It's a motion for entirety.
Entirety, okay.
Should we just do one at the end?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, she's saying, okay.
Sorry, I'm not clear about that. I'm half asleep at eight o'clock.
Who's representing Mr. Libhart here, or the Libhart family?
Hi, I'm John Stewart from Lisbon Day.
John, okay. And you're the surveyor, right?
I'm the surveyor.
Okay. And you drew up the plans, too?
I developed the plans, updated the plans. We've had to pack the five cities now. I hope it's helpful.
Okay. Would you mind stepping up, so we can hear you a little better in case we have questions? Thank you. In fact, you could sit next to Katie, if she doesn't mind.
No, not at all. There's two, there's two rooms.
Okay. If you remember, we had a nice little hike there last week, was it?
It was.
Yeah, okay. We ready? Submission requires preliminary plan application, location map. Preliminary plan shall be accompanied by a location map adequate to show the relationship with the proposed subdivision to the adjacent properties. Supposed to show any existing subdivisions in proximity of the proposed subdivision? We got the plan, right? So we got yes there?
Yeah.
We've got locations and names of any existing proposed streets? That's a yes?
Yep.
Any boundaries of zoning districts with designations? Not applicable, right?
Um, yes, so.
Because it's all in one.
Incorrect. It is actually.
All of the shoreline, that's right.
Three zones in total. It's limited residential, residential business, and residential. I need to include the map in there.
Oh, that's, oh, okay, that's in, okay. So that's a yes. Outline of proposed subdivision, any remaining portion of the owner's property, if the preliminary plan submitted covers only a portion of the owner's entire contiguous holding. Plans one and two? You okay for that, folks?
Yeah.
Okay, yes? Other required permits? I don't see where there are any. So we could say not applicable?
So, we're looking for an advisory opinion?
If.
Or, or we don't pick it's applicable?
Yeah, this is, usually it's, Katie's updated this, and I had to ask the question. I came in today, a little different than what we've been seeing for subdivision. And this is like the entire text, which wasn't on the application before, or the checklist So what we want to know, are there any other opinions from federal, state, or local agencies? Local agency, that's us, huh? That needs to be in this application, that's not, that aren't included? I didn't see any, so I'm thinking not applicable, but.
And aren't we relying on the applicant to tell us if they are or not?
Well.
We don't have any.
It's a minor, it's all, we have to hand them on to wetlands evaluation, you know, for the additional part of the test process.
There is information about the wetlands and that sort of thing in here that seemed to satisfy me. I mean, really what we have here is, it's not really a new subdivision, it's.
There's no, it's probably improved.
Nope, nothing's really changed.
Yeah, that's right.
It's just the five-year.
So is it not applicable?
To me, it was, but you folks might feel differently.
Do you think it's not applicable, Mark, is that what you're saying?
That's what I say, not applicable. I didn't see anything that was required. Katie, any opinion there?
I think it falls upon kind of like the watershed and all of that which is included in this application. I think it's stuff that would be required from.
Well, like the DEP doesn't have to.
Correct.
I'm gonna mark it not applicable unless I hear a protest from somebody. Because Ben's missing, uh, Oak Island. Don't worry, Ben, they won't find anything but a piece of wood.
No, they did find treasure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're excited about it.
Near the money pit. Preliminary plan, preliminary plan shall be submitted two copies, one or more maps or drawings which may be printed. I won't even read this whole thing. They did that, yes. Proposed name of the subdivision, identifying title, name of the town, accessory's map and lot numbers, that's a yes. Evidence of right title or interest in the property, there's a deed.
Yep.
Okay, yes. Field survey of the boundary lines of the tract, giving complete descriptive data by bearings and distances, and made and certified by a licensed land surveyor. I assume that's you, Mr. Stewart? Okay, yes. Date the plan was prepared, North Arrow, graphic map scale, names and addresses of the owners of a record, subdivider, individual or company who prepared the plan, names of adjoining property owners. Saw that?
Yep.
Yep. Number of acres within the proposed subdivision, location of vegetative cover, type together, is that right? Type together with any existing buildings, watercourses, other essential existing physical features?
Cover type.
We're okay? Proposed lot lines of approximate dimensions and lot areas?
Yes.
That's on there? Did I hear a protest?
Nope.
Okay.
Just a groan.
Not even that.
Okay. Proposed names of any roads and the numbers assigned to lots in the subdivision in accordance with the provisions of the E-911 ordinance? Says none proposed, but.
Sorry, I was supposed to say no roads proposed, that's my fault.
Yeah, yeah. But we do have captain's quarters road, so it says yes. Captain's quarter road, and wasn't there another one? The.
Yes, there was.
Yeah, this Gott Cemetery Road. You should know that. Location, names, and present whiffs of any existing or proposed streets, highways, easements, building lines, parks, and other open spaces on or adjacent to the subdivision? We've got that? With and location, yeah, of any streets of public or public approved. Katie, I did see a couple other things that need to be corrected in this. Were public improvements shown upon official map and the comprehensive plan, if any within the subdivision? We've got that right? Got the whiffs? And location?
Yes.
Okay? Yeah, please say yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Just so I'm, just not confused.
You're okay, Mark?
Okay. Any parcel of land proposed to be dedicated to public use and the conditions of such dedication? There's none proposed, right? They're not gonna have a public land, so that's not applicable. Location of any open space to be preserved and a description of proposed improvements and its management? Not applicable? Names and addresses of owners of record of adjacent property, including a property directly across an existing public street from the subdivision? We have that, we see Lynn Brown's property and George Carter's property's there, too. So that's a yes.
Yep.
Location of any zoning boundaries affecting the subdivision? Zoning sketch, I don't. We're okay? Yeah, that one, yeah. Yes. Boundaries of any flood hazard areas and the hundred-year flood elevation delineated on the plan, if any portion of the subdivision is in flood-prone area? Preliminary plans, page one.
Yep, and that shows the flood zone.
Contour lines at ten-foot intervals showing elevations in relation to the mean sea level? Preliminary plans, page one and two. They are, I had to look very closely, these little numbers, but I think they are ten-foot.
They're.
Or five-foot, some of them are five.
They're one foot.
One foot, no wonder I had.
There's a cliff out there, if you remember.
There's, oh, there, yeah, that, well, yeah. Yeah, you mean the one that someone walked out on? Okay. We'll talk to them about that. We'll get them some ropes, peatons. Subsurface sewage disposal systems, test pit analysis prepared by a licensed site evaluator shall be provided for each proposed lot in the subdivision. A map showing the location of all test pits dug on site shall be submitted. Showing the test pits on all, okay, yes?
And, yeah, and soil report.
Centralized or shared subsurface sewage disposal system, approval of the scheme by main department of human services, map showing the locations of the system shall be submitted, finding board may request a site inspection by the department of human services. There's not services, there's none proposed. So not applicable?
Yep.
Evidence of adequate groundwater supply and quality may be requested by the board and shall be submitted by a well driller. We have a letter from P.L. Jones, the Jones boys there. And also something on page one and two, correct?
Sure.
That's a yes?
Yep.
Copy of the most recently recorded deed for the parcel. Copy of all covenants or deed restrictions. I saw that there's a road maintenance agreement, right?
Yes.
So that's a yes. Copy of any covenants, deed, well, you know, it covers that. That's a yes. Copy of that portion of the state soil survey covering the subdivision, made part of the We okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Adequate stormwater management plan must be provided. There's no proposed fill or grading here, it's all existing, right?
Yep.
Okay. Location and size of existing and proposed sub, first, subsurface sewage system, wells, culverts, and drainage waste, not watts, on or adjacent to the property to be subdivided.
That's there.
Yep. Determination must be made whenever subdivision situated in whole or in part within 200 feet of any wetland, great pond, or river within their watershed that the proposed subdivision will adversely affect. You notice, Katie, it's cut off there. So, so that's W. Adversely affect the quality or unreasonably affect the shoreline of that body of water. We okay?
Yes, we got that.
Estimate of the amount and type of vehicular traffic to be generated on a daily basis and at peak hours. Zip at A. Don't really anticipate any increased traffic. Yes?
It's correct from that statement in the application.
Yep. Statement of adequate financial capacity demonstrating financial ability of the subdivider to compete the project, not part of the application. Only lot lines are really being changed here.
The fact that John's sitting in the room means that.
He hasn't paid my bill yet.
Oh, you want us to wait, you want us to wait on that? Okay.
We'll stick with decision on that last one, I'm sorry.
That's a yes. Well, I think it depends who you talk to, but we're gonna say yes, they can fight it out amongst themselves. Okay. Well said. We're gonna find, I'll take a motion to find the application complete then.
I make a motion, the application is complete.
Okay.
Second?
Motion, second on the table, to find the application for the captain's quarters subdivision complete on today, what is it, April ninth? Yep. All in favor? Okay. Here we go. Site plan review, performance standards, Tina Led, Capsid, Sales, Takeout. Okay, first of all, Beth has, yeah, Beth's gonna have to recuse herself, we find out that her business is doing the septic system there. So, you can just sit up here for now, okay? I don't think it's gonna take long. I know, it may be difficult, but.
It might be difficult.
Last night, the selectman voted to, if, allow us to hire a attorney to represent us in this matter, if we so desire. So what we need to do is, first of all, vote, make a motion and vote on it, to see if we do want to hire somebody to represent us in this thorny issue, maybe. to see if we do want to hire somebody to represent us in this often thorny issue, maybe.
But like, not specific to us, this issue, but to the application.
The application, just to consult, that we consult with us regarding this particular application. Okay. So I would take a motion to that effect if the board wishes.
Like the second and third things are?
What's that?
You said like the first thing we have to do is that.
Yes.
Does that imply that...
No, we have, if we don't do that, that negates what I'm going to ask for next, okay?
I make a motion that we hire an attorney to represent us.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Motion second on the table to hire attorney to represent the planning board, to consult with the planning board for the Captain Tales Takeout application. Any discussion?
Yeah, but the question is if there was more specificity or clarity from the select board or from us about the timing of that? Do we know anything about what that does to the timing of the...
I'm going to ask the table, what I'm going to do is ask the table this application if we approve this until we can actually consult with our attorney.
I see, and we don't know exactly how long that would take.
Jesse left on vacation today, okay?
Sure, that's not a thing.
They voted last night, I got an email saying that they did approve that. I know he's reached out, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be the town attorney, okay? And, and it wouldn't be the person we had for the campground.
But then...
But they have reached out to somebody and, and as far as I know, we haven't heard back yet, so...
Okay.
Okay?
That's helpful information.
Okay.
I mean, to me, the only issue, I don't, I wish I'd had the brief, it's that threshold issue that we don't want to get wrong for anybody, because if we get that wrong, it's an easy appeal for someone. And it just mucks the whole thing up. And I don't, I just don't know. I'd have to read, I'd have to look into that a little bit. So that's, to me, the only thing, the other, you know, issues about, you know, buffering and things like that, we can deal with that, we don't need some consultant to deal with that. I feel anyway. But I do think the threshold issue, I'm calling it. I, I, I need to, I don't know, I need to look at it more. I didn't know, it's an interesting issue to raise, I'm like, ah, okay.
So that's why it might be nice to have somebody advise us on that.
And I would think that you'd want to know that, because you would not want to have us say yes or no on that point and get it wrong. Because if we approved it and we were wrong and we appealed it, you, you know, it would not be good. Because that is a, it's just flat up, can you do it on that piece of property or not? Well, and I think, by the way, I do think though, there is, it's a, it's a, it's a, I think, it's a question of, it's the extent of it, like, I, I think that there's a, I think it's probably going to be about you know, looking at the square footage, although I, I don't, I haven't read the Skittles case, whatever the heck that is. But, but it is a, it is a threshold issue, right? You know, when you want it, you don't want to get that wrong. Because it'll, you'll just, you know, if you move forward and you put a bunch of money into it and it's wrong, you're, you're, you're going to stop. And, but if you know, at least if you know now, and if there's a way to, you know, address it, then you know now, and you can address it. Which might be making a smaller footprint, I don't know. But I do, to me, that's, I don't, I, I need to look into it, so I, I don't know how, you tell me, it's going to take us three months to get a lawyer, I'm like, nah, maybe we could figure it out, but it, to me, it turns on like, how quick can we get? Because that's a very discreet...
Also say that our code enforcement officers are not the deputy, but our, John Larson has recommended that we hired an attorney to do this.
Well, that changes everything.
You should have said that for us.
I knew it wasn't going to change anything, but I thought I mentioned it.
I do think that's a very, to me, I don't know of any other, I don't, I can't think of anything else I've heard tonight, though, that we would need legal.
The, the piece to me is about the previous, the other piece is about the previous bill application.
Yes, yeah, there's that.
I don't, I don't, what's that application, I don't know anything about that, but it's, if there's something about that application that was...
Do we have that application?
We do.
I didn't find it, I do not have it available.
John, they would have filled out an application.
I mean, to me, though, that...
Remember, you recuse yourself.
That's going to boil down to, you know, like a credibility determination as to whether, you know, look, things can change or, I don't know, I mean, me.
That's the one that, for me, is like, well, if we have legal counsel helping us determine the, or say, no, that's not in our purview, we don't need to consider that, or we do, and this is the process that we should go by.
So that, that issue is, if it's, I'm trying to think of that rule where you try to split things up and you're really kind of, it's really part of one big thing. We came into that in the campground case, because they were trying to, one scheme of, there was a name for it or something, I forget what it was called.
It's on the site location.
Yeah, so, conceptually, I, I get it, I think if, if that's determined to be all one, then I think it triggers more like water runoff stuff, stormwater stuff, maybe. Is that...
Right, like the pre and post development. Well, I guess the question becomes like...
But, but to me, that's, that's, that's not a yes, no, that's a, okay, they've got stuff to do. The first thing is a yes, you know, you can either do what you propose, or you can't do that. So I, to me, I would want to make sure we get that right.
And here's a chance to at least...
I'd want to make sure we get that right. For everybody.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And, and, you know, it's not uncommon for towns to have an attorney advise their planning boards, in fact, some keep them on retainer.
Yeah, I mean, how quickly, what, I mean...
Dan's probably at some...
How, how quickly do you think we could?
I don't know, I'll try to find out, but, you know, our town manager's on vacation for a week.
Others, so I have a vote for, for yes on that issue.
Okay, okay, I'll call for a vote then. If we're done discussing it. All in favor? Okay, four? And Beth's recusing herself, so, okay. So next, we need to consult with the attorney to find out what we want to know about this thing. So I'm going to ask for a motion to table this application until we can consult with our attorney.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
You need the applicant's approval to do that.
Pardon?
You need the applicant's approval to do that, because you have a time limit.
Yeah, we've got a time limit, we, we can't...
For tabling? What's the time limit? Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Yeah, we've either got to do something by, I forget, it's like 30 days.
Is it 30 days?
We've got to do something, like, I never, I've always wondered if we don't, like, what happens?
I know that, I know that we did get the applicant's approval.
It's an I. So it would be in the, within the purview of the applicant to...
It lets them, it lets them go to the board of appeals.
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, and most applicants agree, but that's, that's what it triggers.
So are you okay with that? I mean, that's the question.
Yeah, that's much of another option, so...
Probably not, because we'd be, we would be hard pressed to make a decision today. And so we would, you know, you, the only way you would say no is if you thought you had a slam dunk and you were just going to go to the appeals board and they were going to tell us what to do.
I don't know, I'm not opposed to the lawyer's advice, I'm not practically right, myself to get it done faster.
And we understand that you want to, you know, if, if this gets approved, you want to move forward with it as soon as possible. We understand that, but, you know, we're not trying, we're not trying to delay, you know, your application. What we're trying to do is make sure it's done correctly, okay?
I know what you're trying to do, I get it. I understand 100%.
So I, I think they were okay with, with waving away.
I, I would hope that within 30 days, we can get somebody to...
Thirty-five from today.
Thirty-five from today.
On page 63, that we need...
Insight plan, yeah.
Uh, there's land use ordinance.
Yeah.
I, yeah, maybe it's a different time.
So the only question we're really up for the lawyers for the lot size and the building and the house size, to make sure that...
That's in my mind, yes, but I think...
I would assume, yeah, I don't, I would assume the attorney will just look at everything and, and advise us from there, not just on specific things. But those are what we're mostly concerned about, yeah. I'm getting sure, look at Dan's response and everything he has in there, what Derek, never mind.
Well, to me, that, that issue is a purely legal issue, because no, the, the facts are, there's no dispute of, you know, this is the lot size, this is, what, the, the size of the restaurant, this is the parking, you can just figure out exactly what's going on and you can, there's not a lot of unknowns, you know? And the other one, I'll call it the pre-fill or whatever we call it.
Previous application or worked under a previous permit.
I don't even know, I don't know, is that preserved, is that an issue? Did you raise that in your brief, is that? Yeah. I don't know what the, I don't even know, how, how's that come before us as a, it's not part of the review of the... Like, would we look through the performance standards, there's nothing that says, well...
There's a code violation or a violation of a...
I don't, I don't know if that's before us.
That would be a question that I'd ask our counsel.
I'm not even sure that's before.
It is relevant, there's pre and post, so more questions that you need to say...
Dan made a motion to table. Until we can consult with an attorney, our attorney. Okay. Did we have a second or not?
You did.
I seconded that one, okay. I knew I seconded the other one. All this discussion, yeah, I stayed up late watching that basketball game last night. I had to turn it off before the end. Damn. Anyway, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Okay, four, nothing, okay. Sorry, so we'll, through Katie, we'll let you know what's going on, okay? Both sides, okay?
Is it, when you say both sides, is...
Well, the applicant and, and the butters.
And so do we let all of the butters know? Do we just let Dan know? I guess, Dan's identified himself as like the attorney for one of the butters, but there are lots of butters. And I, I'm not clear, I don't, I'm not even making an argument, I just asked him a question about, do we have an obligation to notify all butters of where we are and sort of thinking about...
No, I don't think all butters, no.
The burners, letter...
I cannot say that yes or no, I would have to look into that.
Anyway. I just want to keep the interested parties in the loop. Okay? So we have a motion to table and to hire the attorney, not necessarily in that order, okay? And Dan, hopefully that UPS packet will show up.
I'm very sorry.
Is it UPS?
It's UPS.
I'm going to have to talk with Lisa. Lisa, yeah, boy, she came, made a delivery today.
The other question is like, did you get a copy of what he sent us?
Yeah, yeah.
Can we receive it electronically?
I have it electronic.
Can you distribute that electronically?
I need to check, because technically I'm not supposed to be providing anything for an applicant. I feel like that would fall under kind of a similar thing, so I need to double check with that, because I was informed that it would be in the mail.
I guess my request, and that is maybe like a different...
You'll be getting it in the next couple of days, one way or another. I'm sure Dan will do, if we don't get it, he'll have somebody from his office drive it down here.
I will drive it, I would have done it had I known before today, I apologize.
There you go, you satisfied?
I'm bored to eat, but I can't walk.
Okay. Anything else before I move on here? Okay, new business, we don't have any. CEO issues, none. Okay, other, I did see, you know...
You don't want to know them.
Huh? You don't want to know the issues? No. You have a wedding, okay, you can bring us into that whole plan?
There's a lot of them, you don't have the time, my brother.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well. You need to buy some flower arrangements or something, don't ask me, okay? I, Katie did include in our packets that new language, remember we, on the, the amendment...
I just wanted all the information that you guys were okay with the...
Yeah, yeah, but I think we should, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we should probably make a motion to include that, because if you saw in our minutes, we had a motion that had something else in it last, at last meeting. She sent this out to everybody in, in an email.
Yep.
And asked for people to respond, I think everybody was okay with it, right?
I think Lawson and you are the only ones who...
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
I don't think he responded back, yeah.
I'm horrible with emails.
I figured that out.
I don't read my emails.
Yeah, I figured you two out, don't worry about it. That's why I've been...
All you have to do is, yeah.
What'd I do with it?
Would you like my copy?
Is this like, are we looking at solar again?
No, this is just the amendment to the land use table, remember we changed that? Oh, okay.
The shed problem?
No, this is shed, this is with the solar, remember, for the town exemption.
Okay.
Okay, the town exemption, and we had made a motion, Lawson had suggested wording, and we approved that motion. Now Katie has dressed up, taken that motion, and I think it made it better, and, and I think we should vote on it. Amend that, that's all I'm asking.
Are we concerned at all about a typo in the definition of industrial solar energy systems?
For the love of God, I'm not reading English.
None of another one? I thought we corrected all those.
I think the fifth word, or sixth, an area of land or other area used as a property? Did you see that?
Yeah, I saw the area.
I think it should be air ge.
Oh, it's so totally silly, I'm not terribly good at this, if you were pointing out, that would be nice.
Yeah, I didn't even look at page two, okay. It's a word.
Yeah, so it didn't yell at me for it. Yeah, no, I'm not...
So I'll make a, we can just amend that, right? I'll make a motion to be approve these changes to the land use ordinance with the one amendment of changing the word R to air ge in the definition of I, I, I S, yes.
Good catch there.
Second.
Motion second on the table to, what was it, to amend the land use table and definition with, as proposed, all in favor? Okay. Get that out of the way. Okay. Need, motion to set our next meeting for April 23rd.
May I interrupt briefly, I apologize? So are you approving both the definition and the footnote?
That's the way I, I, yeah, 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 with that.
The motion, whoever's writing the minutes, was, was approve the changes to land use ordinance as amended.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
And the amendment is that. And...
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's getting late.
Yeah.
And I haven't eaten.
Sorry.
It's all your fault. Okay, motion to set the date for the next meeting?
April 23rd will be our next meeting.
For what?
April 23rd.
What time?
23rd, 6:00 p.m.
Where at?
We want town office, highly telling meeting room.
Do you have a second?
Second motion.